We're good, Mayor.
We're all okay.
We're good, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let me call to order the Lincoln City City Council meeting of Monday, October 12, 2020 at 6:00 PM. And we have a roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Casper.
Here.
Hinton.
Here.
Hoagland.
He's here.
Okay.
I thought I said here. Can you not hear me?
No, no.
Now, now we do.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, come on. All right. Cool. Thanks. I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Mark.
Likewise.
And Councillor Parsons.
All right. Thank you. Kind of a week here.
Who is that masked me?
Yeah. All right. Let me point out before we get started that for the public, that they, as always, have the ability to send us public comments to publiccomment@lincolncity.org. But our IT department has provided a Zoom option now. And if you look at the front page of the agenda, it says that people will email in to publiccomment@lincolncity.org no later than noon on the meeting day with appropriate information. We can set them up to wait in Zoom so they can do a public comments via Zoom. So that's a new feature. And, you know, councillors, you might point that out to your constituents and let them know. As always, they can come into the chamber as well. So now we have three ways to get to it. We'll move ahead to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of three items. One being minutes of regular meeting, September 28, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Number two is the approval of final order 2020-03, the COE Phase III. And this has been corrected with the addition of a number 45 condition of approval. And then the third item is Third Amendment to license agreement for Nelskott Deck, the Scott Plaza. And I'm going to pull number three for discussion.
Actually, Your Honor, I made a mistake. It was D2, and it seems like you've already made the correction with position 45.
Oh, okay. So number three doesn't need to be pulled?
No.
All right. Councillor Hinton.
I just want to say that I made three edits. I sent them to David Twig for the September 28 minutes.
Thank you. Yep. I remember seeing that.
If everybody has that, then.
Yep.
As approved, I guess. Or as revised.
Any other comments on any three items you want to pull to further discuss? Not entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Take that motion.
Go ahead.
Councillor Hoagland has.
Yes.
Made the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Councillor Casper, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay. Hearing none? Thank you. We'll move down to public comments. Mr. Chandler, do you have any comments in from emails?
The only one that came in, Mayor, was the one that's in the packet itself.
Okay.
Published.
And Councillor Twig, is there anybody in the chamber?
Mayor, there's no one in the chamber.
All right. Thank you. And we heard there's nobody in Zoom, so we'll just move ahead. We have then dropping down to Special Order of Business. And this would be the review of Sustainability Committee recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So some time ago, the Sustainability Committee Chair, Dave Price, presented to you the PowerPoint presentation that's in your packet. As we are now approaching the beginning of working on a budget and as things are loosening up a little bit as far as COVID that enables us to start, I shouldn't say loosening up, but not as demanding, so enables us to start working on other projects. I wanted to bring this back for you and get a sense of where you want us to go. I'm not asking you to provide any action tonight unless you really feel strongly about something, but more to just get a sense of what you would like us to focus on and the city's resources. There were three recommendations that they made. Plastics reductions, sustainable landscaping, and local sustainable food. Now, when I talked with Dave Price today, he said that by far the plastics reduction was their highest priority and really wants us to, if we don't do anything else, focus in on that. And I mentioned to him that you had been pretty clear that that is a priority of the council, that you want us to go forward with that. And the only real discussion I need on the plastics is are you ready to move forward? Or would you like to continue to wait on that? And what they are proposing, what they would be proposing would be a combination of some ordinances that have restrictions or incentives and an education program or a marketing campaign.
Okay. Councillor Hinton.
This is unrelated, and sorry for the interruption, but I've just been told that we aren't on TV. Mr. Twig?
All right, we'll go find out what's going on.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you. So any comments from councillor, suggestions, direction? Councillor Mark.
Someone refresh my memory, please. We passed an ordinance with sort of a date in the future or an open date about banning Styrofoam containers. And I had a concern at the time that I felt we weren't really giving. And I'm happy to pass that. So, but my concern at the time was that I felt we weren't giving, I'm searching for a word, kind of appropriate consideration of the Sustainability Committee's concerns about engaging local businesses in that discussion. And so maybe someone tell me, where do we stand with that ordinance? Is it just sort of, and it was right at the beginning of, or just before COVID or something, I forget. And that obviously threw a wrench in the works. And so where that stands? And is there still an opportunity to hear from businesses on what their concerns might be? I'd like to just give them a voice.
So Ron, can you, do you remember, was it a January 1 or something date?
Yeah, it was after the first of the year, but I don't recall the date. And it was going forward. It was, when we looked at it, it was really just kind of one step in the full, in the full program of plastics reduction. It was the most immediate one that the council wanted to deal with. What I'm thinking of is that that is part of a package that we start discussing with the community, including businesses, that could be incentive, the carrot and the stick approach type of thing. Educational campaigns and incentives, perhaps additional banning that may go on. And so, yes, there is, there will be more discussion on that. The ordinance isn't effect, or I mean, is set to take effect. If there's no further action that's done on it, it will go into effect.
Is that, is that what you're looking for, Mr. Mark?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Oh, Councillor Casper.
Wasn't there some discussion, part of the education was to survey the businesses as well? To begin to get their input? I think that's a really good idea as far as grassroots beginning.
Okay. Councillor Mark?
As I recall, that was the element that was left out of the ordinance. And that was part of my, that really goes to my concern. That had been, I think, I probably remember in this right. That was a recommendation from the Sustainability Committee. And we just glossed, I felt like we glossed over that.
The ordinance is not effective until April 13, 2021.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
So, Mr. Chandler, are you suggesting that, or I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, if the council is looking for a multi-step kind of educational and surveying the businesses first, is that something you'd put together or design? And then have the Sustainability Committee involved in it? Or?
We would work with the Sustainability Committee. It would begin by creating the framework and then going and then working with the Sustainability Committee from there to create a framework. We plan on holding some work sessions with you and seeking public input. But using that framework is the place where we, where we start. And saying, where do we go from here? Here's one possibility.
Okay.
So the biggest question that I really have for you on this is, are you ready to move forward?
But I would say if it's, if committee, if council is, you know, in agreement with that being a top priority, then, you know, we move slow enough as it is and, you know, come. I don't know how you can't say, can't say, yes, move ahead. Because it'll be a while to get everything moving.
It will. And one of the important aspects in all of these, of course, is they have budgetary impact. So they, we are in, we are now working on the fiscal year 2022 budget. So this is just great timing for us to start working on this.
Okay.
The second area that they recommended was in the area of sustainable landscaping. This is a reduction or elimination of pesticides, herbicides, native plants, protecting groundwater. And they were recommending an educational program which could include things like videos and even a sample garden. They talked about recruiting partners and creating work, our classes, workshops, and signage. So again, as we go forward on this, one of the first things that I would, would start doing is working through the OSU Master's Program so that we're not trying to duplicate things to make sure I understand fully what they are offering. But again, so the question to you is, are you interested in pursuing the Going Green Sustainable Landscaping recommendation from the Sustainability Committee?
I have a question before we do that. Would it be prudent to inquire from Public Works or someone to see if we do use pesticides or the amount that we do use? Because I was under the assumption that we don't use it within the city limits. I would like to know, but we do?
We do.
Okay. I, all right. I stand educated. Thank you.
Actually, if I can, Councillor Casper, you're partially correct because at one point, previous councils did make a motion and ordinance to eliminate pesticides. And I think it was, you know, not too long after, three, four years or less, that Parks and Public Works and others came with a back asking us to remand that just because the weeds were out of control and it was becoming, you know, so much of a hand maintenance issue. So there's been some back and forth on the pesticides.
I do know also that the county does, as does ODOT for along the streets.
Yeah. Councillor Hinton.
I, I'm a little bit confused because it sounded to me like with their proposal, this was for residential properties or maybe private businesses, private versus public. And I don't know if we were ever clear about that because of what they've proposed sounds definitely like a private education program, which I think is fine. I don't have, I think it's fine. As a matter of fact, I even gave them, gave them some information about a program similar to what they're trying to develop that was already developed and approved and put together by a city. So it had all the city, you know, focus, I guess, on it. And not just city property, but for whomever wanted to participate. And it got, and it got to that pesticide issue. I mean, it didn't say none, but it just said reduce and use, you know. So it was, it's a little different than what this is. This is creating something new. And I agree with Mr. Chandler that, you know, let's not, but, you know, reinvent the wheel. There are many programs out there like this. And I know because I participated, actually developed one myself, so.
I think the other piece, the connectivity with the, if I recall right, planning even has recommended vegetation plants for landscaping, new construction, and that kind of stuff. So somehow hooking that in, make sure it's all consistent. Right? You know, I guess what I'm wondering, what, what the council's role is other than, say, it's, you know, to the Sustainability Committee, you know, it sounds good.
One of the biggest roles that you would have, Mr. Mayor, is financial. You know, if, if we find that the desire is to move and going forward with some kind of a program and we are unable to piggyback on something that already exists, then you're talking about a budgetary impact. You're talking about a program we would start and we would run or we would partner with somebody to run. So, you know, so a question that I, that I would ask of you is, do you wish to go forward with this? And if you answer yes, do you wish to partner and not spend a lot of money? Or do you wish to add this into the budget if you're unable to partner? So it's kind of a, it's kind of a decision tree that, to give me some guidance as we're looking to our budget.
Okay. Councillor Hoagland.
Thank you. Yes, I would be in support of continuing on their recommendation of sustainability for the, the sustainable landscaping. I think it's important, and I think they're trying to show their greenness that Lincoln City can be, being so close to the ocean, talking with Dave and other members. So, and, and I also was under the impression that the city didn't use pesticides at all. I remember asking about that. So Judy, I was there too, thinking the same thing. So, and since that came up, when can be, when can there be a time where we talk about the city's use of pesticides in playgrounds, for instance, specifically? So that would be a discussion that I think is important. And though their second project was households, you know, it'd be great if Lincoln City could example. And I understand the extra time it would take to hand pick dandelion flowers. But, you know, what does that look like versus the amount of chemicals and whatever else is associated with that?
Councillor Hinton.
I'd just like to say that, like I said, I have some experience with this. And from a city perspective, because that's, that was, I was working for a city at the time, that it does take a program and you need some kind of way to measure it, like how many people come to a workshop. I mean, it's, it's a little more involved than what it sounds like on the surface. And it does cost money. I hired a consultant through a nonprofit. And I'm not sure if she was quite full-time, but maybe three-quarter time. And that's just to keep records, to try and get grants, to buy plants as incentives. I mean, it kind of depends on how big of a program you want. If it's, it sounds straightforward and easy on paper, it is not. It's complicated. It's how you do the outreach to get people to come. Where do they come? What do they get when they come? And you have to hand them material. I mean, I, in my experience, it was a workbook. And I gave that to them. They had it. That kind of steps you through the process and where you can get information. There was a lot of resources that were provided to them. They could look up. And DEQ has a lot of good information. ODFW does. The city has a plant list. And so there's, it's, it's not a simple thing. It took me a year to put it together, and I was working really fast with excellent consultant services. So depends on how big you want to, you want to go with it. So I think that kind of direction is needed from council to the committee because this thing can get, you know, it can be real simple and on occasion have a work session by volunteers. Or we can actually plan out what it is that the city wants to accomplish and then design something around what we are trying to accomplish, which is the way I went at it. I was trying to get at certain chemicals and other kinds of solution to stormwater. So it's as big as you want to go.
So I guess the question, Ron, back to you, might be, is there, if it has budget requirements, shouldn't it be flushed out as some kind of a skeleton framework to come back to council to see at what level, you know, is our appetite?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, with, with all three of these, that's what we would be doing, is working with Sustainability to create that framework, bring it to you, probably in a work meeting so that you then can give us some more input on how to proceed from there.
Okay. Councillor Casper, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was along those same lines. I was just thinking, because we do have landscaping ordinances and as we create new properties, we do have those guidelines that maybe, and I feel kind of imposing to insist that residents follow certain criteria. But if there are already ordinances in place, that we could have more of a resource for those who want to, residents who want to voluntarily participate. And Ron mentioned the OSU program and the idea, Councillor Hinton, of reducing the pesticides and especially Councillor Hoagland on playgrounds, I think would make a big impact and maybe not as such a budgetary dent.
If I could, I could email to you all the workbook that has been, that I used and that I was developing that program, just so you can see an idea of what kinds of things you could be talking about.
That would be very helpful. And finally, then, the third idea is a local sustainable food program. And the biggest feature that they had in the sustainable food program was to create an event. They titled it Flavors 101 Event, which would be a week-long food fest culinary, it'd be done through the Explore Lincoln City to appeal to locals and tourists and features the foods, recipes, and healthy, healthy and easy eating in Lincoln City. So as far as the sustainable, local sustainable food, their biggest recommendation was to do that through the creation of a festival.
I guess, why would that be any different unless somebody wanted to kill it altogether? Why wouldn't there come forth some kind of additional framework of what's involved in budget and availability if it's, if it's an Explore Lincoln City partnering? What that impacts us?
Okay.
Because I'm assuming, Ron, that, you know, depending on the costs and involvement, you know, we'd look at all three and that would also maybe confirm which one to move forward or which ones to move forward.
Okay. And then coming back to my, I guess, my original question, from what I am hearing, you are ready to move forward on these recommendations. They're not still on hold.
Yeah, I think people are interested in moving forward. If it's, you know, looking to you, again, how much staff time and costs and, you know, where it fits and all the other things that we've got going.
We have a meeting later on this month with the Sustainability Committee. So Dave Madison and I will report back to them and we'll start putting things together to bring back to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Looks like you stay on board with a little traffic calming.
Yes, we receive from time to time and sometimes fairly regularly requests to, about speeding in the city on various streets and requests to provide some sort of traffic calming measures to slow the traffic down. There are, so I wanted to just go through a little bit of some of what those calming features are. I'm beginning on page packet, packet page 69 to just identify some of these. Of course, there's police ticketing. This is actually the most effective means to do it, but it's also the most labor-intensive and most expensive type of traffic calming. It's also interesting to note that it's usually the people who complain or their children that usually get the tickets. But that's one measure of traffic calming. One of the latest features that is being done to save a little bit on that cost is through electronic or photo ticketing. We have the speed signs. They all have the ability to put cameras in them. But at this point, we are not doing photo ticketing. Signage is another way to do. The speed radar signs, which we're all familiar with. Narrow roads, which is quite prominent in Lincoln City. What you're looking there is Southeast 3rd Street. One of the more interesting and innovative ones that they're now using is deceptive street striping. Okay? Instead of just a crosswalk, it's painted as though there is some, some kind of a barrier or a hump or something that will cause people to slow down. You also have speed humps. We have a few of those in the city. You have ball bouts. We have a few of those in the city. Most prominently, you'll see those on Arbor and on Highway 101. We have roundabouts. We have a couple of roundabouts in the, in the city. Islands. What's interesting to note in this picture is that the island is not straight. You notice that it's curved a little bit off from the line in this picture. I'm on packet page 72. Again, the reason for that is to create a barrier which will cause people to slow down. Ballards that are put at the sign of the road. And then the final picture you see on the bottom of packet page 72 is pinch points. In this case, they use landscaping islands to create essentially an obstacle course, but they're, they're called pinch points. All of these, well, let me, I think I have one more. And of course, tree-lined streets. The interesting thing about tree-lined streets is that often the road is not any less wide or narrower than any other road. The trees just give it that illusion and it slows down traffic. So as I mentioned, we use police patrol, we use speed limit radar signs, narrow roads, ball bouts, speed humps, and roundabouts. The real thing that I'm asking for tonight is, first of all, the concept, and then, second of all, where you don't want to go, if there's features that you don't want to go with. We do, so we use the radar signs also to collect data. And people will call and simply say, install something. And sometimes the data supports it, sometimes it doesn't. But we haven't really established criteria for when we will use different kinds of traffic calming features. All of them have price tags that are associated with them. Speed humps are generally between $2,000 to $5,000. Speed humps are generally between two to five thousand dollars, as are the costs of the, the signs, the radar signs. And then they go up from there. Usually, when you're going to create a calming feature, you're going to be looking at what is the speed and a certain percentile of people going over that speed, but up to a certain point. So for example, if you're looking at a speed hump, the, the vehicle needs to be able to travel over the speed hump at the speed limit. And in most of the ordinances that I've seen on that, they kind of top it out at about, if the percentile, if the highest percentile of traveling is more than ten miles an hour over that, then they find that the speed humps are not an effective tool. And so other things that are looked at are collisions, proximities to schools, playground areas, sidewalks, designated bike routes. They're generally not used, well, they're, they're generally not used on commercial roads, but they are used on residential roads. There usually is a process by which you would, you would go through this. The biggest question I have on the process is how many people need to complain? Is it, is it just one? Or is it more than one? And if it's more than one, how many is sufficient to then conduct the traffic study and look for traffic calming features? So what I'm really looking for today is first, do you want us to begin to create the criteria for adding traffic calming features? And are then, are there any of those in there that you really would say, no, we don't want? Or ones that you really prefer?
Thoughts? Mr. Hogland?
I think the most consistent thing that I've heard people desire are the speed bumps. And I think those are, in people's minds, something that allows speed to be checked. And I understand from an emergency services standpoint, they're not the city's most favorite. But I think that there's been some updates. And I believe one of the presentations, there was a multitude of different speed bumps. So, you know, that's something that I think would be great. I, I think the deceptive street painting is also really well. I don't know about the, I know we have the, where they do the concrete. Those look pretty good as well. So those would be things I'd really like to support.
Something you might also consider, and I've spoken to people who live near speed bumps, is they're irritating and noisy. So we also have to take that into consideration. In fact, it's those kind of rubber portable ones that are less intrusive. So it's just you have to consider the people around it as well.
I like the, I like the radar signs. I think they, they help. At least they help in my neighborhood that I've noticed. Not totally. We just got a report at our neighborhood meeting that some people are going sixty-five miles on Logan Road, if you can believe it. But anyway, a couple of people going way too fast. But I like the street striping. I think we should pilot that somewhere and see if that works. Because I would assume that that wouldn't be too expensive. But I don't know. Depends on the materials, I guess. And I like the humps, the speed humps too. But I think it would depend on where they are. Don't, for residential streets, I don't really like the bulbouts. I think that's more confusing. And, and roundabouts always don't do what they're supposed to. Like the one in Taft, people drive over, drive around the other way. I've watched them one after the other. So it's not really effective everywhere.
Okay. Councilor Parsons?
Yeah, I, I too like the speed radar signs that we currently have. I am opposed to the electronic or photo ticketing, just from my own personal experiences. Those are too easy to get out of. I really like the three-D looking street striping. And I'm a fan of roundabouts if they're constructed properly. That one in Taft, in my opinion, is more of just an obstacle in the middle of the road and not constructed like most roundabouts. Yeah, other than that, I'm also not a fan of the ballards or the, what are they called? The bulbouts in residential areas.
Councilor Hogland, you back at it?
What, has there been any talk of one-way streets converting those, say, from Canyon's Beach and up that, I forget what road that is, but say northwest or southwest Fifteenth Street? I've had some people express concern there. And I don't know if one-way streets are slower typically. I'm not sure.
We have not had that discussion, so I don't have an answer on that.
Councilor Martin?
Yeah, I, I like the speed bumps and the radar signs. I think this striping is kind of amusing, but I'm a little afraid that you'd be putting kind of a, if people got used to it, they would ignore it, was, was my thought. I mean, it's not like they're cattle guards that you see painted on the country road. I'm a little worried about, and Mr. Chandler mentioned the criteria for determining what street gets the attention. And I think it might be important to have a written policy or something so that, you know, you might run into, I don't know, favoritism. The other thing about the radar signs is those can be moved around. And so you, you don't have the, oh, I've gotten used to this and I can ignore it element. I guess that's all I have.
You know, Ron, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm always amused is, you know, we get, it's like we're, we're, we get to pick. And I'm, I'm wondering about, there are certainly more people out there that are experts, a little higher class than us. And, you know, I wonder if there's recommendations from traffic people in, in communities like our own. One, we have narrow streets. I've never found roundabouts, you know, end up taking more land. And so, you know, I, I don't know why we'd even include that. Because remembering the one-up, what, in Roads End area, you know, we kept wrestling about, it was too big. And then we had to cut it down to, you know, you know, I don't know if it serves a purpose or what the purpose is anymore. But, so I, I'm just suggesting, I'd rather see a recommendation from traffic people that say, looking at Lincoln City and the roads we're talking about, you know, I think that has to be identified. Because we're not talking about 101 or some of the major arteries. And, you know, what, what might fit better?
Okay. Now, the, the biggest challenge that elected officials will have, and if you think to ODOT or any ODOT in the country, they have an established set of criteria when they're going to do something. And no matter how hard you push them, they rarely ever vary from that criteria. So it puts you in a position of, well, what ends up happening is staff said, no, we've done the traffic study, we've done the collision study, we've done all these things, and it doesn't need it. But people still have a perception that there is a speeding problem and they will come to you. So just know that that will, that is, always comes out of when you set criteria for how you're going to put in speeding. I've concluded that we have enough requests that we need to create a policy. It just can't be, we need it, we go out and look, we say, oh, we don't think you really need it, or we do think you really need it, but there's no criteria to base it on. But the downside of that is that it does put you in a position of saying no when that criteria is not met.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't mean to disagree with that. I'm not, because I think we do need a policy. I was only speaking through the type of calming device.
Yeah. What I was speaking of was actually kind of a separate issue. But when we look at these different, these different traffic calming features, what I'll come back to you with is the expense and where they are the most effective and why they're the most effective in different locations.
Councilor Parsons?
Yeah, I was just gonna, when it comes to the process and about how one or five or how many, do we have an idea of what a traffic study costs us? I'd like to take that into consideration when we're deciding on how many people need to complain before we do one.
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'll bring that back to you.
And I, you know, I would think also maybe isolating where we're getting the complaints now, what, what the roads are. And I, you know, I know of a couple that it's, we keep hearing a lot of complaints, but it's the same person all the time. And it's kind of a back road, so.
Okay. I think that gives me what I need.
Okay, thank you. How about number three, L3, the option agreement Taft School District property? Mr. Apicello, do you want to kick us off? We've got an option on the table.
I really don't have anything to say about it. It's, is what it is. The school district says for a dollar, you can have an option to purchase the property provided you exercise the option by December fifteenth. I believe there's, the ability to extend that, it does say you have to close by December twenty-ninth.
Okay. Mr. Chandler?
Just a point of note that we did budget for the purchase of this, so there are, there are funds that are available.
Yeah, I correct that one dollar is the cost of the option. The purchase price is the four hundred twenty-some thousand dollars that we've been discussing for, I don't know.
Years.
Eighteen years.
At least. I think you were in grade school there.
I believe so.
Councilor Hinton?
I just wanted to add that it was as-is, isn't that correct?
That's, that's pretty much it.
Yep.
The condition of title and the property, pretty much, that's the way it is.
Yeah. Councilor Parsons?
Is there a reason we would go with the option over the just buying it? Or do we have to go through this process first?
Yeah, that is, that is buying it.
Okay.
That lawyer just likes that process for some reason.
Gotcha.
Right, Mr. Apicello?
Yeah, I, it's just, you know, you have to get ahold of a title company and get it in process. So there's things to do.
Yep.
It's not like we're gonna leave a paper bag full of cash under a garbage can in the park and they'll leave a deed under another garbage can. So, yeah, well, it'll take a while to get it done.
I've always wanted to do that, you know?
Councilor Martin?
I hope this is an appropriate question. What was, maybe the public might want to know, what was the latest on the environmental
We, we had a, well, it is public record that the district has obtained a no further action letter. It affects part of the property. It's at the, on the last page, the option agreement shows the property affected servitude and a order basically not to remove a cap on certain part of the property.
The area is essentially where the buses were parked, the asphalted portion.
Councilor Hogland?
If, as Mr. Apicello said, that there are other stops in place, what would be, if we move forward today, when would be the next stop and say, okay, we don't want it? And if we wanted it? My question has to do with another assessment, and it doesn't seem like there is another assessment opportunity to base the sale on. And so that's where I'm stuck.
Yeah, I don't think this agreement is set up to give you another opportunity. I think if you don't go forward, you say you agree to this and you don't go forward, then it's considered a breach. But the ready for breach is you terminate the agreement. I, I think this is, you're gonna go forward. It does provide for the right of entry and the right to perform tests provided you contact them. But it's not like the typical agreement such as we've previously done for this property.
And just, I mean, we're talking about a park here. And I mean, it would be one thing if it was a parking garage. And the type of use, I think, is important to this kind of disclosure or not.
Whether or not, whether or not you buy the property, whether or not you, I mean, you should have an environmental assessment done of this property, even if you buy it, even if that assessment occurs after you buy it, so that you can appropriately plan what you will do with the property. Should you want to put a soccer field on the property, you're gonna want to make sure you've tested the ground where the soccer field will be to make sure it's not contaminated. If it is, then you should cover it with something. So it's, it will inform you, your decisions going forward, should you want it, what, depending on what you want to do with the property.
And then what responsibility do we have if, if the watershed there gets affected by the property that we now own? And it's found that we're leaking into the Drift Creek there? What, what happened there?
Well, then, there is the possibility that the city would then be responsible for the migration of any contaminants that are on the property which we own.
And we, do, we do or do not know if that's happening now?
We have information that came through the no further action notice from the state. Essentially said, yes, there are some, there is some contamination, but no further action is needed.
To do what? No further action for what possible next action? Based upon the contingencies of the sale, based upon the use of children using the ground, based upon the use of making it into a, you know, I don't know, based on what?
There, the no further action letter is for the school district and it basically tells them, you're not required to take any further action provided you comply with the equitable servitude conditions, which basically, as I mentioned, restricts the uses of that parcel which shown on the last page of the option. And also restricts altering the covering that's already on the property of those soils. You're, you're, as a property owner, you're gonna be responsible for any other contamination, whether or not it's outside of that area or if it migrates from existing contamination. And, and the issue of whether or not that, the groundwater in this area is tidally influenced. So there is always that risk.
And so with the option that they've offered, we would be able to further test or not? It's only after purchase, correct?
But you have up until December fifteenth or twenty-ninth or something. You can do, in essence, all the testing you want.
Yes, if you have the right to exercise the option, you must do so in writing by December fifteenth. The option agreement doesn't buy the property, it just gives you the ability to say, we are exercising the option. Here is our notice of, you know, we're exercising the option. And you have to do it before December fifteenth. If you sign this agreement and then you don't exercise the option, then we're not going forward. This agreement does give you the option to enter the property. And if you get their permission, you can perform tests.
But that's an if. That's not a guarantee either.
What?
Right. So they can say no. And then, and then, and then what? So they say, we want to test over there. And the school says, no, you can't test over there. And then what? Where is, where's our contingency to cancel the sale?
Well, it, it's an option agreement, so what you do is not exercise that.
Right. December fifteenth is your option, not the...
Yeah. You must send a piece of paper that says, we are exercising our option to purchase. So what we're doing for a dollar, we acquire this option to purchase. The option just does give us the right to enter the property and their permission to dig holes in the ground. And we're strictly... in the ground, um, and we're strictly responsible for any damage that occurs based on digging holes in the ground. Uh, but if you don't like the result of those tests, you could just not send them the piece of paper that says we're exercising the option.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Mark?
Yeah, so two things, what we're, we're buying is, uh, an agreement that prevents the school district from selling this to anybody else, so we're.
Yes, until December fifteenth, yes.
And, um, my understanding of this, uh, no further action letter, am I right in understanding that tests have been performed and no serious problem has been found? So, are we, the question is, is there a need for more tests, or are we, does that tell us what we need to know?
There is a no further action letter associated with the leaking underground storage tank contamination on the property. Um, that's all it concerns. If there are other environmental contaminants, it does not concern that. So, uh, additional environmental assessments, should you wish to undertake them, if you have time to get them done by December fifteenth, uh, even if they're not done by December fifteenth, it would inform, uh, again, and this isn't, this would be a separate motion if you wanted to do an environmental assessment, but, um, and you don't have to decide tonight.
But, okay, but there has been an environmental assessment, and the, right, and the environmental assessment has found that there's nothing that needs to be done, so it, it, does that not, I mean, to me, if I'm understanding that correctly, that satisfies my concern, but, uh, on what basis would we even want to go in and do more testing?
Uh, because the, the document that's associated, I'm not arguing one way or the other, but the document associated with the no further action, uh, concerns not the entire property.
So, uh, again, what you typically do is you do a history of the property, and so, uh, clearly that's been a, uh, there was a tank there that they fueled their buses and all that kind of stuff, so that makes sense, um, but, you know, I, I don't know how long that's been a school and school ground and kids eating the dirt and Mr. Appicello's, you know, flowers, um, all that kind of stuff, so, um, and let's remember, he's a lawyer, you know, he's a risk adverse, um, but, you know, you're right, uh, Counselor Mark, you know, there has been DEQ climbing all over it, an environmentalist, and yes, there's tide water, and yes, it's been since the earth has been created, so, um, you know, I'm, I'm a little hesitant, um, you know, we've been studying this thing, and let's put the social hat on now, you know, we want it for a park, um, if, um, you know, and, and that's what the community has said, they want it, a park at this end of town, so it's for, certainly for social good. If we don't do it, you know, uh, and do take over this, what will that become other than a, you know, a, a real blight on TAF? And I think we, as a community, as a city, and with expertise that we're building with economic development, have ability to get grants, you know, with state agencies that don't like these brown fields hanging around, so they also are gonna assist us in cleaning up any and all. So, you know, you know, I, my concern is zero. I, I would, uh, move ahead, if you want to go eat the dirt for, until December fifteenth, do it, um, and let's, let's move on, um, so we can get something going that's positive in that part of town.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Uh, Counselor Hinton, hold on, Counselor Mark?
I would just say that I agree with you, and that's the direction that we've been going, and, um, I would, um, like to do the two-part, Mr. Mark can make his motion, and, um, I would also like to approve funding or give direction to staff to move forward with the testing, or the, you know, trying to give, um, whatever it is that we need to get going, get, to get going.
So, Counselor Hinton, just for clarification, um, just let's assume, uh, that we, the motion says something to advance and, and exercise, well, you know, we don't have to exercise this option until December fifteenth, um, so, you, we could, we could sit on this, uh, right, Mr. Appicello, until the fifteenth?
Well, I, I think you, you need to approve the option agreement and.
Right.
Their dollar.
Yep.
And, uh, you can decide today, or next week, or next month, that you want to, uh, direct staff to exercise the option.
Right.
You don't have to decide that now, and, and what's recommended is that you maybe consider performing some tests, but it's up to you.
Yeah, so the, the motion really would be just to exercise the, pick them up on their option for a dollar, and then, you know, Counselor Hinton, I think you're, you know, suggesting, uh, maybe some, um, as Allison Robertson talked about, maybe some grants to, for further, uh, testing, um, but be ready to exercise the option come December fifteen.
Exactly, thank you.
Other thoughts, discussion, otherwise, Counselor Mark is eager.
I, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's as drastic as you painted, if we do something with it, or no one's gonna do anything with it. If it's, if it's easy to make into a park, it will be easy for somebody else to do something with it also, so I think that, as you described, if we don't do it, nobody else will do it, I don't think that's a, I disagree with you on that.
Right.
And, and, and I would hope strongly that we vote for a level-two assessment prior to December fifteenth, but.
So I, I guess where we will disagree, Mr. Hoagland, is that, um, you sound like you don't want to move at all unless you have a clean bill of health all the way.
No, that's not true at all.
Well, so, um, what, what if you can't get a, uh, level-two by December fifteenth?
Well, what if my aunt was my uncle? I mean, I don't, I mean, it's the same, we can go there back and forth. I, I'm not gonna play that game, sorry.
Well, it's not a game, you know?
I, we're saying what if, what if, I don't know what if, that's, that's what it is.
I'm just suggesting that any buyer is gonna be faced with these same issues. You also have a survey, you know, that isn't a survey, we don't know the real meets and bounds, so, you know, we, again, we're, we're the most logical, willing to be flexible, um.
Sure.
Buyer.
I'm, I'm not opposed to this being a park in any way. I want to, I want to know what we're getting into and what's it gonna take to fix it and make it the safest possible park, if that's what we decide.
Okay.
Experience, period, that's, that's the only place I'm coming from.
All right, well, that helps define your position a little better than before, thank you.
Well, I, I, I wasn't, I have a question before. Kristi and I, with Counselor Casper, who was here too.
Thank you.
Um, I might be remembering wrong, I thought there was a level-two. This is only a level-one, okay. Um, and I'm wondering, sort of like the mayor's concern about the speed calming in terms of having, uh, professional advice, is there, um, you know, again, here we are, six volunteers, there, there's sort of a gut feeling that we need to keep testing, 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 but is there some way to get professional guidance on, you know, based on the earlier report and the no further action letter? Is there some professional guidance that might suggest that we would need further testing? Or is there guidance that says, oh, that testing's, I mean, the testing is adequate and, and we know what we need to know? I mean, how do we get to that point?
We, we, we paid for a level-one, and that's been in the, it's too large to email to you, and, uh, at the time, we gave it all to the counselors on thumb drives.
And, and so, I'm sorry, so the level-one assessment, if there, if whoever did that assessment thought there was a need for a level-two assessment, they would have said that?
They did.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I'm missing that point there.
Well, and welcome to the lawyer world. You know, Mr. Appicello is charged with keeping your pants up with suspenders. He's a, not the risk taker, so, you know, he's, he's right on point. We've had DEQ, you know, involved in this, the school district, you know, so, I, I would think the conversations with DEQ would have, uh, alerted us if there was more, you know, concern, um, and they haven't. So, you know, and again, as Counselor Hoagland has indicated, you know, you can pay for or try to get a grant for a level-two if you want, you know, before December fifteenth. Um, and I think Allison Robertson indicated that there might be some grants, just not sure that it can come around in time, but, you know, then, then I guess again, that the answer is, so it does, you know, have something. We also know from further studies that, uh, there's not a supersite in town, so this isn't a supersite, you know, um, and Counselor Hoagland asked the question too, has there been any, you know, oil floating in the river, you know? No, um, so, you know.
Well, they haven't tested, they didn't test that for the level-one assessment though. They didn't, they didn't test that, the creek there.
Counselor Casper?
Yeah, I, I, I'm all in favor of moving forward with the, the option, and we still have the area that, that we're talking about, that we can keep it capped, we can keep, um, out of the servitude area. There's certain things that we can do, and we need to move forward and see what we have, and then take action by December fifteenth, that's what I think.
All right.
Did you move that, Judy?
Yeah.
Although Mr. Mark is a much better worded one, I'm sure.
Oh, I was just gonna read the text here.
Go for it.
Uh, I will, uh, move that, uh, to approve the option agreement and for the TAF School District property, and authorize the mayor, manager, and attorney to execute all documents necessary to complete the acquisition.
Is there a second?
No second.
Counselor Hinton, seconds, okay?
Can I just point out, that doesn't include exercising the option, we'll come back to you for that.
Correct.
His, his motion was not that, though.
His, his, his motion was to go, uh, to exercise, what, what's the wording on that?
He didn't say that, though. I hear you, and I want to go for that, but he didn't say that. He went, go ahead with the acquisition.
No.
No, I heard option.
Execute all documents necessary, I don't think that's the same as.
I said all.
Beginning the acquisition.
The, the idea was to, uh, authorize, uh, any environmental reports, any titled work, anything that we had to do. What I wanted you to add to that was to say, that does not include exercising the option, that includes coming back to council, that's all my.
I'll amend my motion to say that this, that does not include exercising the option.
Okay, I'll amend the second.
So, again, for clarification, Mr. Appicello, what's the difference between what you've just said, exercising the option, and, you know, exercising this document to have the option?
Or, or should it say exercising the agreement?
Yeah, approval of the option agreement is what we're doing now.
Right.
The additional language I added was to make sure that, uh, Ron and I, and could execute any documents we need to execute to go forward during this option period, so if you get to exercise your right to enter the property and perform tests, we can do that, although I've got a feeling you're gonna tell us, uh, anything else that would be involved, we can have preliminary work done on the title and that kind of stuff, because we're gonna get a report from them, and see if it's gonna be insurable title and that kind of thing, but we're not gonna exercise the option, which has to be done in writing, until we come back to you.
Right, correct, okay. All right, any further discussion? Roll call, uh, Mr. Twig.
Is that me?
Yes. It's hard to do this thing. Um, Hinton?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. All right, how about, uh, order, order number twenty twenty dash oh-four, an order approving six-month lease extension from McKay's Market?
This is on me, we simply didn't, uh, I simply didn't get the agreement revised after we had a, a call with them, so, uh, we needed more time to get it done.
Okay.
That we previously had a six-month extension, they're agreeable, so.
All right, just to get the paperwork.
It's time to get it done.
All right, any questions from council? All right, take a motion to approve order number twenty twenty dash oh-four.
So moved.
Second, Counselor Hoagland, and seconded by Parsons. All those in, well, this, roll call?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Then we have, uh, the COVID-19 update.
Yes, sir, not a lot to report on the COVID-19, other than one very significant thing. We are, we will have a partial opening of the city offices in order to accommodate the ba, the ballot box and the voting. Uh, that will be done from, um, uh, Friday, uh, through the election. Uh, the ballot box has traditionally been, uh, just in front of the information desk, it will continue to be at that point. We are asking people to come through the downstairs, uh, the parking lot entrance, although both entrances will be open. Um, essentially, what we're trying to do is to make the voting experience as normal as possible by, um, having a place where the ballot boxes can be put in. The information desk will be open to answer any questions and to provide information, uh, that people may need.
And Ron, uh, could you keep going with, uh, remind us just with some, that community center is open, and library, and just a nice update on that?
The community center is open, it does have a limitation on the total number of people that can come in, so we are encouraging people to make appointments, although we do take walk-in if there is space available. Now, uh, the Red Cross and FEMA continue to use our building as well, um, as does Mills on Wheels, which is doing delivery out of, out of there, but the, the, um, the dining is not set up. Uh, the senior, uh, center is not yet open, uh, and so, the gym, the pool, the, oh, and the rec kids program is operating as well. So, uh, with, uh, it, now, to accommodate, uh, some, um, we've changed the hours to accommodate a little bit and some reduced staffing levels, uh, we're, we're beginning a little bit later and closing an hour earlier than we have, and at this point, we're not opening on Sundays. Um, I've been very proud of the fact that, uh, we have not had to lay employees off during the COVID-19 pandemic, however, we have lost our lifeguards, uh, many of our lifeguards, and some have gone off to school, others have found new jobs, and so we're in the process of, uh, recruiting new lifeguards, okay?
And the library?
The library, um, is open by appointments, uh, the computer center is, is open by appointment, the curbside drop-in program continues, um, and it is, uh, it's going through a gradual opening. And, uh, they are working now on a, a by appointment browsing of the, of the book selection and the material selection now. And that more information will be coming out of that shortly.
Okay, Counselor Hoagland.
Yes. Could you also, could you restate again the times at which the ballot box will be available for people to drop their ballots again, please?
It'll be our normal hours from eight to five.
Thank you.
Monday through Friday.
Counselor Hinton.
Yeah, I just, um, I participated in the League of Oregon Cities COVID, um, fire, um, communications that they hold for the cities across the state. And there was a mention about, um, from the governor's representative that because in Oregon, our numbers of cases have gone up, that, um, the governor said that all options are on the table, including going back to baseline, with the exception that she really wants to make classrooms available for kids. But anyway, my, my point is that we just need to keep helping that number go down with wearing our masks and social distancing. Because we don't want to go back to baseline.
And the schools did start today, didn't they, K through three, within classroom?
Not sure on that.
No. Oh, Counselor Parsons, you.
No, they're still at home.
I heard just kindergartners doing the two days there, two days online right now. And they also started with, um, high school sports workouts started today.
Okay, all right. Counselor Hoagland.
Can we get the sign that's at the north, the south end of town to change? We had gotten an email, I forwarded that and we're, what we're saying is put like covers of pots on your face and not the actual, um, I forget what it exactly is, but.
Those were changed. We don't. Counselor Hoagland, they, they changed the word to cubre boca, which I think is mouth, which means mouth covering in Spanish, but is that the correct word to use, cubre boca?
I thought that's the email that we got that said that it was the wrong.
We were using tapadera before.
Oh, that's, that's right.
Is cubre boca correct?
Yeah, I just, I didn't remember talking about it. So I was like, hey, wait, I wrote it down and I was like going through all my notes, so I apologize. I was like, oh, we're on the topic, so thank you.
Yep. Anything else for COVID? All right, let's, uh, how about Echo Mountain Complex update?
I have a little bit more on that than I did on COVID. Uh, the county is still waiting for approval for, of the FEMA housing mission. Uh, that affects our ability for, um, uh, uh, creating temporary housing for displaced individuals. The county is starting an after-action review. Uh, they are going to use a consultant and they're in the process of hiring that consultant. Uh, on our own after-action review, uh, Ken Murphy, our emergency preparedness coordinator and Chief Palmer at their police department are, um, working on the after-action review. Uh, they are expecting to bring something back to you on the first, um, council meeting in November. It will probably be in the area of the low-hanging fruit and the, uh, and the kind of capital expenditures you could anticipate. Um, the FEMA, um, is setting up a, a new recovery office. They've been in our, uh, community center. Um, they, uh, that will go through the end of this week. And they are currently setting up at Suite 118, um, next week. Um, and, uh, in, in Suite 118 in the mall. And then finally, there are just many, many organizations that are continuing to provide opportunities. This is an invitation to the, to the city council, if any of you would like to join St. Augustine's Church, uh, who is heading up and partnering with, uh, a couple of other churches, uh, to, um, provide food, to unload food. The Archdiocese has approved, um, uh, bringing in food once a week for at least the next three weeks. On Wednesday at three o'clock, um, uh, these two churches, uh, these churches will be led by St. Augustine. Will be unloading those. Uh, they're going to be using the old TAF firehouse because it has a walk-in refrigerator. People will come and pick up the food that's being dispersed. If you would care to join them in helping to unload boxes, it will be a marvelous experience.
And, uh, Ron, uh, could you update us? Um, I, I think we're still getting, uh, calls, uh, emails from folks who are looking for copies of the citizens' suggested, um, issues regarding debriefing. You, you loaded it up, Ron's report.
Yeah, they've all been loaded on Ron's report. They're also in all of the minutes, uh, uh, over the last three weeks or three, two, three meetings. Um, if anybody is interested in getting a copy, they can certainly just send me an email at rchandler@lincolncity.org and I'm happy to forward those to them.
Great.
But right now, they are on Ron's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoagland.
Yes, thank you. Well, um, so I think a lot of us have done a lot of volunteering for things like that. And I've noticed that both with the COVID and the fire and now like children and the backpacks and food and all this, there's a lot of people, a lot of separate organizations donating food. And I've donated, I mean, I've spent my time driving from four or five different organizations. And it seems like they don't all know each other or know what the other ones, some of them do, but some of them don't. And I substituted for Rick, uh, he was, he and his wife are doing, um, food donations through another organization and talking with her today. And I just got to thinking, if we can have a work session, could we have a work session with all of the people who have been doing things lately or trying to get a whole Zoom meeting? And, you know, one, I'll tell them thank you, uh, on behalf of the city, thank you for everything that they've been doing, an official thank you. And, but, you know, trying to get a real good coordinated effort from both the counties, you know, the county funds and services to the north, um, something that I think is really important and that would benefit a lot of different groups and people and get services to a lot better, a lot more people easier.
Okay.
There is a, there is a group that's already trying to do that. It's being headed up by Marcy Baker and Amanda Cherry Holmes, uh, that I met with about two weeks ago that is trying to do that very thing and also to be able to direct people to where the resources are. It would be a wonderful opportunity to say thank you. The challenge is, um, so many of these, we just don't know about it. People are doing, people, organizations, um, are just taking their own initiative and they're doing marvelous work, but, uh, much of it, we never know about it.
Sure, and I think that's an opportunity for us to ask the, the citizens and ask in our official Facebook capacity, hey, do you know of someone who's been doing something with COVID and the fire and all that stuff? And, and, you know, interact with the community in that, at least in the social media platform and to spread it that way. And then also have the opportunity for people to come to us and say, hey, here's what I've been doing. And then get, get everybody together, I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, Counselor Hinton.
Yeah, um, as you all know, I'm on the governor's recovery, um, regional recovery task group for the fire. And, um, something that was mentioned at the last meeting was that there are disaster, disaster recovery funds available for approved counties. And so far, three counties have been approved and they received $1 million. And, um, it was said that Lincoln County is, um, in great need. So they're pretty sure that we might get that funding, the county might. And what the money will do, it'll be available for two years if they, if the county receives the money. And, um, it can go towards temporary employees for recovery. And the, um, the people that they hire must be dislocated, um, workers because of the fire. And it's available for the workers to work for 12 months or less. So that's a big deal. And hopefully the county will get that money, so some folks will get jobs and maybe some other good things that come of that. And the money can be used for temporary housing, rebuilding housing, a planner, um, permit technician, construction, childcare tutor, mental health provider, gas cards, appropriate clothing such as steel toe boots and other things. So it's pretty wide-ranging. So let's, um, hope that, um, the county gets that money. And, um, also, um, there's been a question and it was answered, um, by, there's 474 fire survivors. Um, and so where are they being housed now? And as of September 29th, um, 24 in emergent, um, housing, say, um, seven in vehicles, two in place of employment, two in mass shelter, nine are homeless, three in a church and one in a tent. There are 365 people in short-term, um, housing of some sort, 178 are in hotels, motels, six in secondary residence, 134 with family or friends, 23 in RV or camper, 24, um, in new temporary rental, 85 are housed. Um, 83 in their home, one new permanent rental, one FEMA-provided unit, and one purchased new home. So those folks that have been displaced are finding, um, a roof for their overhead in any way they can. It's wide-ranging, so, um, anyway, I, I just found that amazing, those numbers. I wanted to share it with you. And I sent you all reports, we have some of this.
Okay. Anything else regarding the Echo Mountain? All right, uh, how about the city manager, city attorney reports? Ron?
Just have two items, Mr. Mayor. The first is that at this, as of tonight, I have 36 people that have contacted me and interested in participating in the parking ordinance workshops. Uh, those will be, uh, almost all of them have asked for it to be done through Zoom. So they'll be done that way. We'll be dividing them up into, probably do it by ward, um, so that we have common areas. The second is a question for you as the city council. Uh, this is scheduling for our, uh, city council meetings in November and December. The, um, we have a meeting scheduled for the ninth. And then the second meeting of the month is the 23rd. That is the same week as we have Thanksgiving. And then we have in December, we have a meeting scheduled for December 7th. And then we have a meeting scheduled for December 21st, which is the weekend of the Christmas holidays. So my question to you is, do you want to hold the second meeting in November and the second meeting in December?
Counselor Parsons.
We do the second and fourth Mondays, right?
Yes.
Okay, so for December, that's the 14th and the 28th.
Did I get that wrong?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you for that correction. You're right, I'm sorry, it's the 14th and the 28th.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the, the question would be, you know, do you want the second meeting in November and the second meeting in December, you know, canceled? Ron or Richard, do either of you know of, uh, issues that would be coming forth that would be, you know, time-sensitive or, you know, we'd need action by that date?
I'm not aware of any. The only one I'm aware of is exercising the option that you passed tonight.
Okay.
Which would needs to be done by the 15th.
And we'd have the meeting on the 14th, so we'd be all right there, okay? Richard, anything that you're aware?
Uh, no, not, not with regard to that. I did have one item though, when you're ready.
Okay. So is there any objection then to canceling the second meeting in each month, November and December? I don't see any objections. Okay. Why don't you consider those a holiday week without a city council meeting?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Appicello.
Uh, just one thing, and I'm not prepared to talk about this yet, but apparently we had late last week an initiative petition submitted, um, and so I'll be talking to Tony about that submission. Uh, but as a reminder, and this has to deal with the urban renewal, uh, plan adoption. So this is, uh, just a reminder, under 26432, uh, city employees on the job during working hours can't advocate for or against any candidate or measure. And, um, it's that prohibition doesn't apply to elected officials, except elected officials are reminded not to attempt to influence or direct city staff for, to do things for or against any candidate or measure. So, and I previously sent that out, that statute, the guidance from the elections division to you, but I'm just reminding you that, um, you will have something, um, which will be on a future election. And I'll answer questions about it next time because I haven't looked at it yet.
Okay. All right, um, anything else, uh, Ron or Richard? You, okay. Why don't, uh, we check, um, any public comments?
Mayor, we do have a lady in the chamber who I think wants to address council.
Oh, okay, why don't you bring her up?
Will do. I'll disinfect the mic first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Fran Lonan. Um, I have questions for Mr. Chandler. Uh, you had stated that you had posted the letters to, uh, for the community to see. Uh, where did you post those at, Ron?
Report.org. They're also on the webpage as part of the minutes.
Oh, okay, and under which, uh, date of the city council did you put those under? Because I'm not seeing it on the work session.
They, uh, they would have been on the dates we received them and we started receiving them. I believe it was on the 28th.
The 28th, okay, I'll, I'll look there, no problem. The other thing is with the Echo Mountain fire. Did you receive a report from the fire station on what their resolve was?
Not that I recall.
As far as what their after-action is?
No, I, not that I've seen.
Okay, great, that was it?
Thank you.
Uh huh.
And Ron, do you have anything come in on email?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, Counselor Casper, do you have anything for good of the order?
No, we don't.
Oh, okay, Counselor Parsons.
Don't know if it's for the good or the order, but I did have a question. We're obviously missing our seventh and we know one will be elected soon. Will they get seated at the next meeting after the election? Do they got to wait till January? Do we know how we're going to work that?
Well, typically you got to wait until the county certifies the election. So it wouldn't be, you know, until certainly the end of November generally. So probably would just do it January 1 or with the new ones too.
All right, thanks.
Yep. Um, Counselor Hinton.
I just have, I have three things. One is that, um, um, we've been talking about parking around, um, people reaching the thumb for a hike. And, um, Explore Lincoln City has been, the staff have been checking in on all the websites and all the social media about, um, about where people should park to go on that hike into the knoll. And they had some wrong information on some of it. And so, um, the social media and the website people or whoever manages those so that they would change it to the appropriate place, which is the. so that they would change it to the appropriate place, which is the cul-de-sac, um, on, in the villages on the end of West Devil's Lake Road. And I, last time I was up there, I counted 11 cars, so it's working, Ron. Thank you. And also my husband was out walking and they took a woman back to her car because she got lost in the trails. So it is working. Her car was parked at the cul-de-sac, so thumbs up, thank you very much. Um, and I just also wanted to say, um, thank you to the staff, um, from Ron and Dale that, um, they have been doing incredible work, um, and very creatively, um, keeping busy and doing a lot of interesting things, um, during this COVID time. And my, I just want to say, I really appreciated it and I love all the creativity and they're doing some great things. And also all the businesses that, um, Mr. Hoagland brought up before. I mean, it's just, it's just amazing and wonderful and so proud to be here. Thank you all for all of your good work.
Great. All right, Counselor Hoagland?
Uh, I just, again, I was gonna say it again, you know, thanks to everybody. Um, I, I'm gonna work a list. I'll be prepared better next time, but there's so many people that I wish to just thank because it's incredible and it's mattered to so many people. And, you know, I've been fortunate enough to be able to donate the food this time. And I take great pride in it and it feels so good to connect with people. And, um, you know, it just goes to show you, there's so many hardworking people. So thank you all very much and I, to council and staff and everybody. It's, it's been really wonderful working and being with all you guys. Thank you very much.
And, uh, Counselor Mark?
Yeah, I had a few, um, um, that bit about, uh, the public being invited to participate via Zoom in, uh, future meetings if they, um, make the request ahead of time by a certain time. I wonder, I saw that was at the top of the agenda, but is, um, is there a note going on the, you know, is that going to be on the Facebook page? Or I, I think people might want to know that, uh, be told that a little more clearly. There's a way to do that. Um, on the, uh, ballot drop boxes, we still have the outside ballot box by the library drop also. So you don't have to come inside, you can just drop.
Right.
And, um, just along that line, I just want to comment on, uh, what a pleasure it is to vote in Oregon and to have those options. And we're seeing, uh, the troubles they're having in other places, including my home state of Pennsylvania, which is a mess. And, uh, I just really appreciate the fact that we're able to do that here so easily. Um, uh, Ron, you mentioned the St. Augustine's food, uh, helping with the food service. Did you, when is like that, or do we just need to get in touch with them?
No, um, I was actually contacted by them and asked if I could kind of help round up some volunteers. It's, uh, Wednesday at three o'clock, uh, down at the Old Taft Firehouse.
And I'll just along that line, I'll mention, I happened to be out by the Salmon, uh, River Grange a few days ago. And the activity out there was like a beehive of donations and people working, uh, to, to do what they can out there too. And there were tents set up in the back. And then, thank you Riley, you bailed us out. I really appreciate you, uh, so that, and this is for the Bene Brith camp, which is making dozens, I don't know Dick, is it hundreds of, of food bags? Um, and, uh, we were distributing those, Brit and I twice a week, we do, it takes us, I don't know, several minutes. I mean, it's not, not, not hard at all and people are really appreciative. And we got called out of town kind of last minute and Riley, uh, stepped up for us and, and helped us there, so thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's great, thank you.
All right. Well, uh, you know, I apologize for being so short this evening. Um, but I guess we can call it a night and you can have the rest of the night to yourselves. Thank you all.
Thank you. Bye.
Right.
Ooh, Dick was on, uh, phone tonight. Dropping some good, uh, good comments.
Short one. Ooh, nice, short one. I was waiting to hear what Appicello and Chandler had to say about canceling those meetings. If there's more traffic, I remember a couple of months ago where we had those meetings happen.